I'd like to call this meeting in the Westland City Council to order. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilman Jim Godbell.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Deputy Clerk, roll call.
Councilman Godbell?
Present.
Councilwoman Green?
Present.
Councilman Hersberg?
Here.
Councilman Protem Landau?
Present.
Councilman McDermott?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Rukowski?
Here.
Council President Hart?
Here.
A quorum is present.
Thank you. So, we'll go into special presentations and announcements this evening. I'm gonna turn it over to the Mayor. I think we're gonna hear about some Halloween decorations.
Good evening, City Council. So, tonight, we're here to take just a few minutes to recognize our residents in the city of Westland that participated in our annual Halloween decorating contest. And, tonight, we have the three winners of the contest, and we appreciate everybody that either nominated themselves, a neighbor, or a friend, or a business. We had, this was all on the city's website, and we asked the residents to pick a winner. And, tonight, we're here to recognize the three winners. All the residents that were nominated are gonna get a little letter in the mail to thank them for participating. And, Council, tonight, we're gonna ask the three winners to step forward, and on the displays on both sides here, we're gonna show you exactly what their houses look like. So, the first winner, under the most spooky category, was Matt Satella. And, Matt's house is on Gary Avenue. So, Matt, you with us here tonight?
Yeah.
Alright, why don't you step forward? So, Matt, on behalf of the city of Westland and the Westland City Council, we want to recognize you for first place in the most spooky category for your house on Gary Street. It looks like you spent quite a bit of time on it. You wanna say a few words?
I did. I entered the contest last year, and I didn't qualify, so I added so much more this year. I worked on my lighting, too. I noticed from my picture from the website that you couldn't see a lot of what I put into it, so I spent a lot of time on the lighting. And, you can see out front, I added a breakdancing skeleton, so if anybody happened to drive by, you could see it spinning out there.
Alright, well, you did a great job. You won most spooky, but I think you were pretty close for over the top as well, so...
I can't compare with that one house. They're like a haunted house, so that's, I'm fine with this.
Alright, well, you did a great job. We're gonna give you this. We'll ask you to step forward right here, and then we're gonna take a picture of all the winners at the end.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Alright, the next one is the most over the top, and this year's winner was Chris and Shannon Fant, and their house is on Cherry Hill. Chris and Shannon, are you with us? Alright. Great job. Alright, you wanna say a few words about your presentation?
We just appreciate the city of Westland, and we love doing it for the neighbors and all the kids.
Alright, well, congratulations. Thank you. Alright, and then, our last first-place winner is for, we call this... The Best Autumn Display, and the winner of that is Ms. Stacia Diaz. Stacia, are you with us? Stacia's house is on Emerald Lane. You wanna say a few words about your presentation this year?
Hi. How are you? We just hope everyone enjoyed it. I wanted to bring joy to our family and the city of Westland, as well as our neighbors, and thank you, guys, for recognizing us.
Alright, well, it's our pleasure. You did a great job. Thank you. Alright, we're gonna ask the Council President to come down, and we're gonna take a quick picture, and while we're waiting for the Council President, we just want to remind everybody that the Neighborhood Service Department is gonna be holding an All-American Holiday Decorating Contest as well. The contest runs from November 29th through January 2nd. You can visit the city of Westland's website to nominate yourself, a friend, or a business in one of three categories. They are the best traditional display, the most creative display, and one of the favorites is the over-the-top. So, pay attention to the website, and you'll see the information. And, once again, thank you all for participating.
Alright, well, now, move into questions or input on the agenda from the public. This section will allow a person to be recognized only at the beginning of the meeting to address the council pertaining to items that are specifically on the business agenda right now. Questions asked will be answered during the agenda item following a motion and support from council. So, this is just for items that are on today's agenda item. Any other items, there's another speaking part at the end. So, is there anyone on my right? Yes?
Good evening, City Council. My name is Benjamin Boshaw. I live at Grayson Bellevue Street, and my property actually borders the Resolution E for the night, the adoption of the land division of parcel 5602299004700. The first issue is that no notice was given to the neighborhood that this was even up for division, and according to Section 94, 244, at least 14 days prior to the date of the city council meeting, the clerk or designated representative shall erect a two-foot-by-two-foot sign on the property proposed to be divided containing the following information. At the top of the sign, the following words shall appear: "This property is proposed to be divided." Section 2, the following words: "No more information. For more information, contact the city of Westland Planning Department." I spoke with the planning director, I believe, back in April, when we had heard that this lot was even for sale, that she was, the previous owner, was listing it as possible to be split, as to what the relevance of that would be, and if anyone in the neighborhood would have any say. And, I was basically told that, as long as it's not against the Michigan Land Act, that there's nothing you can do, you have no say in it. And, I wasn't aware of these ordinances with the city of notice, and that we have any right to come to a meeting and speak on it. And then, in Section 94 dot 23A, Land Division Approval Requirements, Section B, number 10, it says, "The division is harmonious and compatible with the surrounding properties. It is in the best interest of the community and is consistent with the preservation of health and safety and welfare of the community." On our streets, we have two of the six private roads in the city, and every lot is an acre. And, so, to keep it in parallel with the rest of all of our lots, we would all like it to stay one-acre lot, and if they wanna build one house and sell it, it's fine and dandy. There's a property on the other side of me being developed right now, where it's one family building a house. No one's had any issue with that. They can do what they want. You know, they worked hard and came here from Mexico and built a house, so no one cares. They're fine and dandy. No one's asked any questions recently. We only really even found out about this even coming up, because they, a tree company showed up and just cleared the lot. There was no survey done, no tags put up or whatnot, none of the trees flagged, anything like that, which goes against many of the ordinances for the city's tree ordinance removal. And, we all just asked that this be not approved, because it's non-harmonious with the rest of the neighborhood, and we were never even giving notice. We just only found out, because they started cutting trees down, and we looked into it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone on my left? We'll come back to you. Sir, anyone on my right, and you're standing up, so we'll go right with you.
I'm already here. Yes, I'm Dennis Blaharsky. I live at 38389 Bellevue Street, and I had something put in my mailbox tonight regarding this meeting. Had no prior notification, and I don't know if I had to be notified or not notified, but I was notified by someone sticking something in my mailbox. I highly object to any lots being divided along Bellevue Street because of the sewer lines that were put in, were put in for only so many sewers. There was a development that tried to go in from Joy Road to Bellevue that was denied because of the size of the sewers. Now, I don't believe that there were any modifications to any sewer lines, any electrical, anything else posted about this being developed. And, I'd like to know, how many trees are you allowed to take down and tear down what was a beautiful berm, I would call it, between that sub on, not on Bellevue Street, but on Gray Street? Because they're building houses on Gray Street, and it's only a one-lane street. It's not wide enough to ever be paved, not wide enough to have anything done. And, on Bellevue Street, I'd like to know who determined the property lines when I inquired with the city about the house across the street being up for sale, and that Bellevue Street was big enough for them to use that driveway? Well, many years ago, on Bellevue Street, they were not allowed to use Bellevue Street, that house on Bellevue Street. They had to put in their, when the city put in a driveway culvert, they put it on Hicks Road where their property line is. Since the road was like a snake for my whole lifetime, I'll admit I'm 75 years old, so I've lived there a long time, and I don't understand how this is being done in the city of Westland now, when it could never be done earlier, developing property without proper notification and without proper lot size. Now, are these going to be, I heard it was recommended for four lots. How can you put four lots on a private road that are going to be, what, acre lots?
Alright, your time's up real quick, so we're gonna go ahead and get that addressed. Thank you. Is there anybody on my right? Sir?
I'm Bill Churek. I live at 38674 Belleville, and that's right across the street from where is now just bare vacant land, and all the trees and everything, even stump grinders have been sent in to do this. I guess my question is, is that now knowing, you as councilmembers, now knowing that your own regulations as far as notification has been overlooked, violated, whatever terms you wanna use, that on the agenda tonight, you plan on passing this, even though we as the residents were not given an opportunity to have any input into what happened at the prior meetings? Absolutely none. Developer was, we were not given. So, my question is, what are you, as a city council, plan on doing, knowing that you have violated your own regulations? Will this be just rubber stamped tonight and passed, or will it be tabled so that we can have a discussion and the residents can have the proper input that we supposedly, as residents of the city of Westland, are allowed? I would hope to hear a response soon, if not tonight. I guess we will get an answer if you do pass the resolution.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone on my left? Anyone on my right? Sir?
My name is Jack Hunter. I live on 8330 North Gray Street. My comments have to do with that property that you wanna put four houses on instead of one house. I've been a resident on Grace for over 50 years. I've seen older residents pass away, and I've seen a new generation replace them. The residents on Gray Street have large lots. Some people have two lots. The residents on Bellevue also have large lots. Some also have dual lots. We are noted for our country living in that area, because of, we have deer across our front yard and stuff like that. The draw for people looking for a big lot is the lots. All the lots on Grace, all the lots on Bellevue are large. That's what draws people in to buy those properties and that. I feel that making four small lots instead of one lot, I would not recommend that, because it would lower the value of my home and that. It doesn't flow with the rest of the residents on Bellevue and Grace that have large lots. Those are my comments, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Just ask general, anybody else? Any comments on, sir?
Hi there. My name is Rick Schneider. I live at 38720 Belleville. I have over two acres of property that is directly across the street from one piece of property that you wanna split up into four lots, less than a quarter acre apiece. It's just ridiculous, absolutely ridiculous. There was no signs put up. We had no notifications of this, that this was happening. Nobody knew how, that anything was happening at all. I don't know how they got a survey on the property. There was no signage. There was no stakes. There was no markers for the survey. The survey was done after the trees were cut. A week after the trees were cut's when they came in and surveyed the property. You have all your information that was dated 8/23, that it was surveyed. Well, they surveyed it, I don't know how, because it was nothing marked. They cut down over 68 6-inch trees on that property. They cut down a half a dozen 24-inch trees. The builder, a developer, that says he's gonna develop his property, has a builder's license. I went in and questioned Westland about this, and they said, "Oh, no, he's doing it privately." He wasn't doing it privately, and I'm gonna send a letter off to the state regarding his builder's license. So, he's, so twice already, twice, he has already screwed all of us. No signage, and he cut down all the trees. Nobody had any notification. Both of these issues were supposed to be, everybody should have taken part of it, and instead, he went under the table to do these two items. What else is he gonna do under the table? How else is he gonna screw us all over? I've lived here for over four years and seen nothing like this. This is just crazy. It needs to be taken care of. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
My name's Caitlin. I live at 8366 Gray Street. I think we've probably made it clear at this point that no one on the street enjoys this, and I actually brought a petition, then forgot to bring up. There are actually 18 people on this, but we got the signatures. It's informal, but we did just wanna make the point that even those who couldn't show up tonight or be here also don't agree with this happening. And, I think a lot of us feel slighted, because if I were to get a kennel license at my house, I need the approval of 100% of the people within 300 feet of my home, and letters will be sent to their home asking for that approval. If I wanna put up a privacy fence, the city sends letters to however many people within certain amount of feet of my house, again. So, letters are sent out for a privacy fence or a kennel license, but a property can be divided and houses can be built with no notification posted at all. So, I don't understand how homes can be built, and, but a fence can't be put up without notification. That doesn't even really make sense to me at all. And, I understand that's not within the state laws, but our own city ordinances require that. And, I also agree with Ben that it isn't harmonious or compatible with the surrounding properties. We all have an acre. We live there for a reason, and we are all very clearly unhappy about this. So, we would like something to be done about it, if it's possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir? Richard Graham from Westland, and also with Move Westland Forward. Good evening, council. Good evening, Mayor Wauw. Great to see you back in council chambers since, I think, August, so welcome back. You know, to the residents that were speaking, you know, this isn't the first time. I know it affected our neighborhood, where notices weren't given far enough in advance or at all. So, this seems to be common practice by the Wauw administration to, you know, not give proper notification out, and then in turn affects neighbors and causes issues within the city. So, hopefully, this will be resolved and corrected. Thank you. Okay. You already had your shot, sir. I'm sorry, it's only one time. No, you can't. I'm sorry. Is there...
It was the builder that wants to put a quick signing out.
Sir, you're out of order. I'm sorry. So, is there anyone else in the audience?
Yes. I live at 38389 Bellevue Street. My name is Kathy. I think my husband and I are the longest residents here, present on that street. In fact, my husband's family has been there for over 100 years. We have seen, just as she stated, many, many times, these little things happen where we are not notified. And, this is probably the third time in a short period of time it's happened. And, one of the things that all of us have mentioned, and I think it's very important, if we are all concerned about Westland being, remaining a green city, which we all promote throughout the city, why would we ever have allowed those trees, every single one of them? Not one, not two, not three. Over 60 trees, and some of them have been there for 100 years. And, we just decided that we allowed somebody to come in and clear-cut that property? I think that everyone sitting here should examine their conscience if they had any part of that. And, it's not just because I'm old that I'm objecting to new things happening. That's not it at all. It's that that's a travesty, when in this city, there are very few areas that we have preserved the heritage that began this community. And, suddenly, somebody comes in and says, "We're taking that small lot, which doesn't even have a public roadway on it. We actually own the road, our family, and we have allowed people living on the road to have access, access on that road for over 80 years." So, if you looked into who brought electricity to that road, it was his grandfather. So, I think all of you should step back and reconsider what you may have already approved in your mind. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Sir?
How you doing? My name's Thomas Celestri. I'm a new resident at 38748 Bellevue. The reason why my wife and I decided to purchase that lot was because they were all one-acre parcels. It was nice scenery. It was all green and great, and now you're gonna allow four houses to go up in a one-acre parcel, or just over a one-acre parcel? That's unacceptable. There should have been two streets, or two signs, one on each side of the street in regards to the split, and there wasn't. Should have been to builders' responsibility, not to cities. So, with that being said, I don't know, man. I'm alright with one house, but not four houses. That's redundant. Thank you. Y'all have a good one.
Is there anyone else? Sir?
Also a resident on Bellevue Street. I've been there for 23 years. My water pressure has always been low at my house, so I have a question about infrastructure. It could even handle, not even one house, but four, to meet four. So, I've had the city out numerous occasions to check my water. They said it's a little bit on the low side, but it's fine. I have a fire hydrant across the street from me that I've never seen checked before, so I question that we could even put out a fire on that road. So, I am definitely against four new houses being put up on there. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else? Alright, we'll close input on the agenda and move to the consent calendar. Is there a motion? Is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion for the consent calendar, removing Item E to 1A.
Support. Alright, there's a motion to move E to 1A from Councilman Godbell, supported by Councilman Hersberg. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carried. Item is moved. We now move back to the consent calendar with Item E removed? Yeah, because it went out of order, and I'm just letting it go. Councilman Godbell, there's a motion on the consent calendar from Councilman Godbell, supported by Councilwoman Rukowski. Are there, is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carried. Consent calendar is approved, less Item E. Deputy Clerk?
Council has approved the following consent calendar items...
Council has approved the following consent calendar items. Approval of minutes of regular meeting held November 1st, 2021. Approval of purchase of audio/video equipment for City Hall. Purchase from CDWG, total amount not to exceed $15,489.78. Adoption of prepared resolution authorizing the development agreement with Liberator Development Group for the rehabilitation of two properties, 2104 Emerson and 2120 Emerson, to promote affordable housing for eligible income homebuyers. And designates the mayor and city clerk to sign the development agreement and designates the Director of Housing and Community Development to sign all other documents on behalf of the city relating to the construction and sale of the property to an eligible homebuyer upon completion of the project. Approval of requests to reprogram CDBG and home funds from micro enterprise to learning lab and from home program income to home CHDO Liberator Development Group. Approval of transfer of hazards and boardups to the 2021 property taxes for the winter 2021 tax bill. Approval of the extension of the 2021 winter tax payments until Monday, February 28th, 2022. Moving to new business, item one. Approval of site plan for Kettering of Westland Single Family Residential Subdivision parcels south of Avondale between Vinoy and Hubbard, Gregory Windingle and Lombardo Homes. This is planning division number 2252. Administration recommends approval contingent upon departmental requirements and recommendations.
Is there a motion? Motion by Councilwoman Rukowski. Is there support? Supported by Councilman McDermott. Mo?
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, Council. This is the, this is the subject property despite of...
Former Kettering Elementary School. It's up on your screen, highlighted in yellow or outlined in yellow, rather. The former Kettering Elementary School is located south of Avondale between Hubbard and Vinoy. The property is about nine acres in size and is owned R5 Single Family Residential. Tonight, the petitioner proposes to develop the site with a 35-lot site condominium subdivision and is therefore seeking site plan approval. Properties to the north, south, east, and west are all zoned R5 Single Family Residential as well and developed by single-family dwellings. All proposed lots will meet the minimum lot width and lot area requirements of the R5 zoning district. These requirements are lot width of 60 feet and lot depth of 100 feet, and each lot must have a minimum area of 7,200 square feet. The petitioner proposes to provide public streets throughout the development that will be dedicated to the city once the development is completed. The development will also contain concrete sidewalks, street lighting, and street trees in compliance with the city's landscaping ordinance. The development will also contain a stormwater basin to control stormwater runoff and contain that runoff within the development here at the northeast corner. There's additional landscaping being placed along Door Avenue and Hubbard Avenue in addition to what's located within the development. This is in addition to what is required by the ordinance. The entrances will include monument signs with landscaping around the sign, and the subdivision entrances or streets, rather, will be aligned with the existing Fairchild and Glenn Avenue over here. The petitioner proposes to construct a wide variety of ranch and colonial-style homes that range in size between about 1,400 square feet and about 2,800 square feet. Homes will be constructed with a brick exterior. Only the front side to the top of the first floor will include brick. Today, the zoning ordinance requires brick on all four sides up to the top of the first floor, so the developer is asking City Council to waive this requirement, again, to only install or use brick on the first, or I'm sorry, on the front facade. These are some of the elevations that will be provided to homebuyers. Most of them are colonial options with some being ranches. The Planning Commission did hold a public meeting on November 3rd, did send out public notices. There were several people in attendance. Some had concerns regarding traffic. Others wanted the parcel to stay as green space, to be used as a park. The Planning Commission deliberated and discussed these concerns with the residents and ultimately is recommending approval contingent upon departmental requirements and recommendations. And Greg Lombardo from, I'm sorry, Greg Windingle from Lombardo Homes is in the audience today if you have any questions.
Petitioner, come on up and introduce this to us.
Good evening. I'm Greg Windingle with Lombardo Homes. For a minute, I thought Mo gave me a promotion.
Floor is yours.
Okay, thank you. I have a very short PowerPoint presentation. I also have copies of the exact PowerPoint presentation. If you don't mind, I'll hand those out so we have the exact same thing. Would that be acceptable?
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. As Mo indicated, we had a Planning Commission meeting on November 3rd. We did have some comments from residents, which there was some back-and-forth discussion. Ultimately, we received a 7-0 recommendation for approval. So just very, very briefly, do have an agenda. Give me five minutes or so, and we'll go through that, talk about Westland and Lombardo's presence with specifically Marley Woods. Prior to this, we'll talk about the two sites for your consideration tonight, and then, of course, we're here to request your site plan approval. So on the upper part of that slide is Marley Woods. We were before you in 2019, and we asked for the brick waiver and received it. We were very successful with that. Marley Woods sold out in a little over two years. As you can see from the prices up there, 274 was the average sales price, and we had six homes that transacted over 300,000. The community was an arrested development, I think was the term I heard that we had used, and now it's a completed community. We'll be closing our final home in December. So that was very, very successful for us. We were very happy with how that worked. The two sites, and actually, this is kind of a combined presentation. We're talking about Kettering and Madison tonight. On the lower left is the Madison site, gives you an idea of what it looks like, surrounding area. On the other side, Mo already had a slide up of the Kettering site and the general locations of those. They're both surrounded by, go ahead, the next one. They're both surrounded by R5 zoning, and we think the homes will be very compatible with our neighbors. This is the Madison site plan. We've got the one connection to South Carlson. We need two connections for fire, you know, access, things like that, so we've got two connections there. There are no other possible connections to any other direction, so we were somewhat forced to make our connections there. We have 45 home sites on 12 acres, as Mo indicated, compliant with the R5 zoning, the underlying zoning. And the one thing, Mo mentioned, the sidewalks, the public utilities and so on, the one thing to emphasize is we are also doing the stormwater basin, so we'll be managing all our storms who are on-site rather than sending it undetained downstream, which is something newer. And then on the Kettering site, kind of the same thing, 35 home sites on nine acres, same thing with the compliant and so on. We're making the connections. Instead of running the two streets just straight east and west and having it continue with that grid layout, we put a little bit of curvature in it to make it a little more of an enclave neighborhood. The two sites that you see circled on the far east side, those are sites that we're partnering with the Wayne-Westland School District, and they're going to be part of their construction program. We're very, very excited about that. We're purchasing these two sites from the school system. They are former elementary school sites. That's why we're keeping the names in there. So we're very excited about these two lots going back to the school district, and we're going to partner with them in a mentoring role and actually some job shadowing and helping them through that process. Next couple slides are just some of the elevations. You saw some of the other ones. We do have some optional brick on the front, so if somebody wanted to add some brick to the front of a home, that's a possibility. All of these homes will have a two-car attached garage. They range, the ranch is about 1,400 square feet up to about 2,700 square feet. They all have the attached two-car garage, and they all have a basement. With that, we would ask for your approval, and I'd be glad to answer any questions as soon as...
Thank you. Is there any discussion from the council? Councilwoman Rukowski?
Hold on, Councilman McDermott. There we go. Find the button. There you are.
Good evening. Two questions. First off, thank you for your presentation, and thank you for giving us the PowerPoints. In regards to the trees that are shown in the presentation, is Lombardo planning on doing the berman, the landscaping planning with the subdivision itself, or is that responsibility going to be on the homeowner when they move in?
Lombardo will be doing the entrance landscaping, all the common area landscaping. We'll be doing all that, and then we'll work with the homeowners because of the number of replacement trees that we have to plant. We can't plant all of them ahead of time or during the home construction. There would be damage. So a lot of the trees will go in as the homes are installed. All the entrance landscaping and the common area landscaping will go in at the onset of development.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
New business, item 1A. Adoption of land division resolution, parcels at southeast corner of Bellevue and Gray Street. This is planning department number 2251. Land division approved by City Council September 2021.
Councilman Londo?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to table to get more information on this.
Motion to table is from Councilman Londo, supported by Councilman Hersberg. Motion to table goes to oral call. Oral call.
Councilman Godbout?
Yes.
Councilwoman Green?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hersberg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Protam Londo?
Yes.
Councilwoman McDermott?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rukowski?
Yes.
And Council President Hart?
Yes.
Motion passes.
So for the residents in there, we've just tabled the item that you had a question about on the consent calendar earlier. That's going to give the council a bit more time to discuss with the administration and be able to bring this item back forward in the future if it requires to be brought back forward. So right now, it's tabled, and it'll have to be resurrected by the council. So there's no other action to be taken today, but it has been tabled. So you're aware of how that worked. So I just want to make sure everybody who came here to speak about that is aware of what just happened. So it's been tabled. Can't take any questions right now. If you have questions for me, I will hang out after this meeting, and you can talk to me all you want, okay? Deputy clerk, please take us to the next item.
Item number two, approval of site plan for Madison of Westland Single Family Residential Subdivision, two parcels south of Avondale, east of Carlson, Gregory Windingle and Lombardo Homes. This is planning department number 2253. Administration recommends approval contingent upon departmental requirements and recommendations.
So move. Motion by Councilman Londo, supported by Councilman Godbout. Mo?
Thank you, Council President. The subject property here is the site of the former Madison Elementary School located south of Avondale on the east side, or I'm sorry, yeah, on the east side of Carlson. This property is about 12 acres in size and is zoned R5 Single Family Residential. Similar to the previous case, the petitioner proposes to develop the site with a 45-lot site condominium subdivision and is therefore seeking site plan approval tonight. Properties in the immediate vicinity and bordering to the northeast, west, and south are all zoned R5 Single Family Residential as well and also developed by single-family dwellings. This is similar to the previous case in relation to the variety and types of homes being offered, both ranch and colonial, and their sizes ranging from approximately 14 to 2,800 square feet. Site plan is obviously a little bit different. We have 45 homes here. The other one was 35. All of these parcels that are being created are compliant with the R5 zoning designation. There's a stormwater detention basin being provided to contain stormwater runoff within the site. There's concrete sidewalks, streets that are compliant with the city's street standards and will eventually be dedicated to the city once approved. There's also landscaping and trees being installed, which are all compliant with the landscaping and tree ordinances set by the city. The developer, similar to the previous case, is requesting a waiver from the City Council, which it has authority to approve, for the brick requirement. Again, the zoning ordinance requires brick on the entire front facade, I'm sorry, on the four sides wrapping around the home on the first floor. Petitioners proposing brick on the first floor only on the front facade. The Planning Commission also heard this case at the November 3rd Planning Commission meeting. Notice was provided to all of the residents within 300 feet of this property. Again, there were some residents that came out interested in learning more about the project. Some had traffic concerns. All of those issues were addressed by the developer and the Planning Commission at the meeting, and ultimately, the Planning Commission is recommending approval to the City Council. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Councilman Godbout?
Thanks. I just wanted to thank Greg and Lombard Homes for bringing both of these projects forward and working with the school district, keeping them as standard R5 versus a PUB designation, which is what we've seen a lot of in the past, to try and jam more homes into the space available. I think that keeping it in the R5 designation works well with those, with those homes, and based off of the success that you've had with the Marley Woods project, I'm sure that you'll have great success with these as well, so thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Any other discussion?
I want to echo my colleague's sentiments. I'm very appreciative and impressed with what you did over at Marley Woods. So we're looking forward to this. Building in some of these vacant school properties has been something I've been an advocate for since I've been on council, and I think all of us have too. So I'm very thankful that the school district is working with you so that we can actually get some new roof starts here, which end up starts to drive economic development, which is what everybody keeps asking for. So we're doing it, and it's one of the dominoes that fall. So is there any discussion from the council?
Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you so much. It's a joy to work here. It truly is.
Thank you.
Item number three, approval of vouchers.
So move. A motion by Councilman Hersberg, supported by Councilwoman Rukowski. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously. We now move into public comment. Everyone speaking before the council should do so in a civil manner. Speakers shall refrain from abusive or profane remarks, vulgar language, disruptive outbursts, threats, racial slurs, or other conduct that interferes with the orderly business meeting. Personal attacks on council members, the administration, city staff, other speakers, or members of the public will not be tolerated. The clock will start upon the first words of the speaker. It will not stop while the speaker is recognized from the floor. It's the speaker's option to ask questions at this time, and the person questioned may choose to respond during the speaker's allotment of time. However, the clock will not be stopped once it is started. Is there anyone on my right? Sir?
Bill Chitwick again. In regards to the tabled motion, will we be notified? How do we have to follow the City Council agenda as far as looking up the minutes when this is going to be brought back before the City Council? How will we know?
So I'll answer your question. So right now, it's tabled. This is what we know. The items before us, it's been tabled. I would always encourage you to always pay attention to the whatever's coming up on the agenda, just as a standard thing to do. But right now, this council, I, through their unanimous agreement to table that motion, is basically asking for... asking for more answers from the administration. The public has posed a lot of questions that I think we don't have the answers to as far as council and we want to get them. So, that's going to afford us some time to get some information from the administration and then after that, some steps will be made. If there's additional notifications that'll have to be made, that can happen at that time as well. Mayor, did you want to chime in on that?
Yes.
Let me go ahead and turn it over to the mayor as well.
To the chair, thank you, Council President. Sir, what I would suggest, everybody on both of you at Gray Street tonight is our city planner, Mo, is out there in the lobby. Make sure you give him your name and phone number and email. What we'll do is, we'll encourage the developer to maybe set up a meeting and we can maybe host that here at city hall and invite everybody in with the developer, because I know you had a lot of questions tonight that because of the council action to table, you weren't able to get those answers. But, we'll ask the developer to set up a neighborhood meeting, try to answer as many questions as we can, and then we'll certainly keep the council in the loop and the city council will have to make an action to bring that back before the city council. So, I think we'll have a chance to get everybody their answer to their questions. And I know that there was a lot of questions that went around the notification piece and we'll let the city planner explain what that process is and make sure that the developer understands it. If, in fact, he did something wrong, we'll make sure that if they do move forward in the future, that it's corrected.
Will it be the developer or the city that contacts us?
Our city planner will take the lead on it. He'll encourage the developer and I'll make sure that the planner is part of that meeting, but we'll reach out. And just to be clear, the administration's not asking to split this slide the developer was, but we'll certainly make sure that the developer meets with the residents and we'll keep the city council in the loop on that as well.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, is there anyone on my left? Yes.
This may sound unusual, but I don't have anything to complain about. I want to say thank you very much for working on Palmer Road. It's a pain in the neck right now, one-way traffic, but it's going to be wonderful. And the best part of all, the plan is, I was told, there's going to be sidewalks. And between Vinoy and Wayne Road, there aren't sidewalks there for children. When you see someone in a wheelchair on the side of the road trying to get through, okay, it's unbelievable. But anyhow, that's all going to be fixed and I want to say thank you. That.
Thank you.
Oh, I didn't tell you who I was, did I? Carol Sharp.
Hi, Carol. All right, anybody on my right? Yes, sir.
Richard Graham again with Move Westland Forward. Wanted to continue my comments from the last council meeting. Through to chair to our city attorney. Mr. Falzone made some interesting comments regarding the police report involving Arthur Warren, the assault and battery. What is the current, what is the current status of legal process that you said was playing out two weeks ago? Also interesting, you seem to imply that no one on city council was aware of this or had any involvement before the last council meeting. Councilwoman Ratauski, thank you for your comments last council meeting. It was definitely refreshing to hear those. I would like to read parts of the police report. On 8/3 of 2021, it was primary election day for the city of Westland. That evening, there was an event at the Wayne Ford Civic League during, for the candidates receiving the vote tallies. During the party, she was sitting next to Arthur Warren. She stated that after the event concluded, many of the residents, along with the supporters who attended the event, cleared out. It was just her and Warren who stayed behind momentarily as she prepared to leave. Mr. Warren had begun accusing her of being a plant and spying on the different campaigns that had been in attendance. She denied these allegations. She stated that Warren grabbed her right thigh area and squeezed, then got in close proximity to her face and stated, "I make kings out of men," while pointing at her. She stated that she was in fear of further assault and battery and appeared distraught and upset while relaying this account. So, the comment, "make kings out of men." Mayor Wau, who do you think he's talking about? Councilman Landau, who do you think he's talking about?
Care to comment?
Councilman Godbout of who he may be talking about, making kings out of men?
Through the chair, sir.
Through the chair.
Through the chair. Through the chair.
This is ridiculous. And the gentleman he's talking about sitting in the audience, he should step out into the hallway or be out in the parking lot and ask him those questions.
He's paid with taxpayers' money. He's on boards and commission, including the Diversity and Equity and Inclusion Committee, which is frankly a joke that he's on that committee. There's been issues with that committee where a woman resigned because of comments by Mr. Warren. So, we're not taking it anywhere. He's paid with taxpayers' dollars. He's paid with my dollars. I believe city council can demand an investigation. Will council do this today? Any council members? He should be removed from these boards and commissions while at the very least this is being investigated. Look forward to hearing comments, maybe from you, Councilman McDermott. Thank you.
Hi, is there anyone on my left? Sir?
Hello, my name is Grant Allen. I don't know who these questions will be addressed to, but because of the possible connection to the city of Westland, I am inquiring. I have four separate questions as to the position that Ms. Lisa Nazarene has with the city, along with the salary that she makes yearly, included with the grants that she has completed on her own fruition, and the total number of money that she has brought into the city on a yearly basis for those grants. Thank you.
All right, is there anybody on my right? Anyone on my left? Yes.
Sorry, I just have to get this up. I'm so sorry. It should have been up here. Okay, well, good evening. I'm Councilwoman-elect Melissa Sampey, and since this is the first meeting after the election, I'd like to congratulate those who were successful, some among us tonight, Mayor Wau, Council President Hart, Councilman Gers, I'm so sorry, I don't mean to mess up your name, Hersberg and Godbout. I really look forward to working with all of you on this council and bringing my talents to the council. So, for those that were unsuccessful, thank you for running. I know there's a few here. It takes a lot, like it really does. That journey was, it was just a very long journey. So, I really applaud those that put their name in the ring and hopefully, we can move the city in a direction that all of us feel proud about. I also wanted to thank city clerk and deputy clerk. Your team was amazing. I can't even begin to fathom like how quick you guys were. We had the results so quickly and I hear from other cities that they were still waiting and ours were there. So, thank you. And thank you to the volunteers who worked the election. It was very positive as well. With that being said, I'm just going to kind of wrap up. I just want to let the viewers know at home, thank you so much. I had so much overwhelming response, the confidence that people put in me. It really has been amazing and I'm not sworn in yet, but if you would like to reach out to me, I'm going to give my personal cell phone. It's 734-637-2078. You also can find me on Facebook, Councilwoman-elect Melissa Sampey, and I'll be working with the mayor and the administration to get on board and get up to speed. So, thank you again. God bless you and your families and I hope everyone has a wonderful evening.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience? Sir?
My name is Ken Sharp. I wasn't at the meeting, the thing that the gentleman over here spoke about, but it seemed like he wasn't either. So, it seemed like this is a court issue. It shouldn't be decided here. I know Mr. Warren. I believe in him. I don't think he should be removed from anything unless the court has decided things. That's my opinion. He wasn't there. I wasn't there. He's going on someone's hearsay. I believe Mr. Warren's a good person. I'm going on his, sir. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Sir?
I'm Arthur Warren and that's what the allegations were made towards me. Mr. Graham seeks to have council place of punishment on me, which council, I believe legally, doesn't have the responsibility to do that. Two, if there's to be an investigation, the person who made the allegation should file formal charges and I would welcome those formal charges. Seems like Move Westland Forward has listed itself as pretty much a vigilante committee to oppress me. But, what I would want to say is that history dictates these kinds of things. And I'm going to say it right here. In 1921, a false allegation was made against a black man in Tulsa, Oklahoma, and the city was burned down. In 1923, a false allegation was made against a black man and the city of Rosewood was burned down. In 1955, a false allegation was made against a young man in Matil and he was murdered. In 1994, Susan Smith made a false allegation against a black man and the whole city was running around chasing after black men and found out she lied. Victoria Mayberry is a liar.
Personal attack, sir.
Well, she is.
Personal attack, sir.
Wow, and you're a liar too, Mr. Graham.
Sir, you're out of order.
Bottom line is, the bottom line for this is that it begins to end up being a question of race.
I felt for my safety walking out of this council meeting.
Chief Tredrusick is here for you.
Don't let the chief export you out of here. It begins to be a question of race and Mr. Graham is sending out dog whistles to the whole community, but this question needs to be tried in a courtroom, not here. So, Mr. Graham, of all of that, you encouraged Ms. Mayberry to file charges and then we can get it on. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? We'll now close citizens' comments and move to comments from the administration.
Thank you, Council President. First of all, I want to thank the city council for moving forward tonight with the site plan consideration for both the Madison school site and the Kettering site. First of all, Lombardo Homes has done an incredible job in Westland. You know, the gentleman from Lombardo, Greg, had mentioned about how they came into Marley Woods and they stepped into what we called an arrested development and they turned around and made a nice project out of that. The thing that I really like about, they really do a nice project, but the thing that I think that's really remarkable about this is, council, if you remember, I mean, Marley Woods was the first new homes that were built in the 481, I'm sorry. Marley Woods was the first new homes that were built in the Wayne Westland School District in a long time. We've approved a lot of new home sites in the Livonia Public School Site of Westland north of Warren. Marley Woods was the first new homes since the recession built in the Wayne Westland School District. Madison and Kettering will be the first new homes. These are going to be $250,000 to $300,000 homes built south of Cherry Hill in the city of Westland. So, we've talked a lot about, we want to try to not just have development in the city hall area or on Ford Road or maybe in the DDA or Tifa District, but all throughout Westland. So, these are really nice projects. They're south of Cherry Hill. There's been a lot of good things happening in the south of Cherry Hill District in the last year between both of these projects. You know, we're looking at building a community center at Marshall, the Eloise Project, the Kronk Boxing Gym. All of that has happened south of Cherry Hill. So, it's nice to see some development happening in the 48185 part of Westland. Next thing is council, we only have a couple of days left. If you know any veterans that want to be part of our Veterans and Active Military Holiday Meal Program, the cutoff date is Wednesday, November 17. So, this won't get out to too many people between then, but hopefully, all the council members, you can keep getting the word out on your social media for us. All they have to do is call my office to be registered. The meals will be distributed on Saturday, November 20 from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the Wayne Ford Civic League. Council, we have some of these things right here. They don't look like much, but this is a Wayne County Household Hazardous Waste voucher that we have. About 200 of these that were delivered to the city of Westland from Wayne County through Wayne County Executive Warren Evans Department. We haven't been able to do a Household Hazardous Waste drop-off date in the city of Westland for the last two years, but the county has given us 200 vouchers that any residents that want one of these can come and pick up. The voucher will have these at the front desk and Mike, our security guard, sitting down here, he's going to have these at his desk tomorrow morning. They're good for, they're good until December 31, 2021. All you have to do is you need one of these cards and you can take your household hazardous waste to Environmental Recycling Group, which is on Merriman Road. It's in Livonia, but it is in Wayne County, so they're free of charge and we would certainly hate not to get all these out in the community before the end of the year. To the residents, the Wayne County Light Fest kicks off this week. They'll be starting, I believe it's this Wednesday. It's open Wednesdays through Sundays. It's closed on Mondays and Tuesdays and the entrance is off of Merriman Road between Ann Arbor Trail and Warren. Council and the residents, I will be having my 15th Annual State of the City Address here at city hall on December 2 at 7:00 p.m. and we certainly invite everybody to come out that night. WLND will be taping it for residents that weren't able to attend. Council, also mark your calendars for the annual deck the city hall event, which will be held here at city hall Wednesday, December 8 at 5:30 p.m. We'll be right out front and we'll be welcoming Santa and Mrs. Claus back to the all-American city. With that, I just want to also say congratulations to all the successful candidates, Councilwoman-elect Sampey and Council President Hart, Councilman Godbout, Councilman Hersberg. Congratulations on your re-elections. To the deputy clerk, I know you worked your tail off during the election, both you, the clerk, and your staff, all your election workers. You really did a great job and we appreciate that. And with that, I'll just end by saying thank you to the residents for continuing to put your trust and support into me and allow me to serve as your mayor. Thank you.
All right, anything from the city attorney today?
Nothing from the city attorney's office, Council President.
All right. Begin council comments tonight with Council Protem Londo.
Thanks, President Hart. I'll start off tonight by congratulating Matt Satella, Chris and Shannon Fant, and Stacia Diaz and her family for the decorating contest. You guys did a great job. There were really some great displays out there all across the city. So, thank you to everyone that continues to show their holiday spirit and like the mayor said, the Christmas program's going on as we speak too. Thank you to the election workers and the city clerk's office for a successful election. As always, you guys are very professional and thank you for all that you do. Congratulations to all the winners, all my colleagues, the mayor, and my colleagues on council that were successful and being reelected and welcome to Councilwoman-elect Melissa Sampey. I'm excited to get started and I think you're going to be a tremendous asset to our community. For the folks in the audience on Bellevue Street or Gray Street, I'm going to give my contact information out. My telephone number is 734-223-0200, if anybody wants to speak with me offline. And then, last but not least, happy belated Veterans Day to all of our veterans that served our great country. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Hersberg?
Thank you, Council President. So, just a couple of comments briefly on the Bellevue Street. A lot of residents were here tonight sharing some concerns. I have the same concerns. I hope we can get these cleared up, the tree ordinance violation. I hope we can get these cleared up, the tree ordinance violations, the, well, if there was or wasn't notice, it didn't sound like anybody did receive a notice on that street. There was residents, excuse me, citizens' comments that were directly across the street, and I believe next door, it sounded like that didn't receive notice. So I'm not sure legally if this can move forward or not without notice, without that meeting. And it's on the table right now. To my knowledge, we're not obligated to bring it back off the table, it can stay there indefinitely. So just to keep that in mind. And then the last thing on that is, if we could have the fire chief, there was a comment about inspecting one of the fire hydrants on that street. If we could just check and see when the last time that was inspected, just to make sure it's working, since it was brought forward tonight. And I look forward, I hope, I hope all these issues get resolved. Just wanna put in a plug for the coffee hour at the library with State Representative Kevin Coleman and Wayne County Commissioner Glenn Anderson. It's gonna be Monday, December 13th. Again, that's at the library at 9:00 a.m. on the 13th. And then I just wanna congratulate all the candidates who ran for office this year, all 17 or 18 of them, I don't even remember now. It's not easy, it's not fun. I'm just, I'm glad we have so many people in town who wanna advocate for issues that they feel are important, and there was a few candidates who shared some good ideas. And I hope they don't get discouraged and decide to stay involved and keep sharing those ideas and keep trying to make Westland better. And then, congratulations to Melissa Sampe. Look forward to meeting with you before January and working with you next year. So that's it for me, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Green.
Thank you. I'd like to start by informing the community that there is a Job Fair and Rental Assistance as well as Veteran Services Fair taking place this Sunday, November 21st, at a local church here in Westland. The time will be 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at Burning Bush Church. Burning Bush is located at 30355 Annapolis Avenue, and they are located at the corner of Henry Ruff and Annapolis Avenue. So again, that's a Job Fair Rental Assistance and Veteran Services Fair this coming Saturday from 10:00 to 1:00 at Burning Bush Church in Westland. Secondly, would like to thank the community members who came tonight to discuss your concerns regarding the proposed development near your homes. I wanted to applaud you all. I actually organized, before becoming an elected city councilwoman, I organized my community to require the city of Westland to install streetlights in my subdivision after we had a lot of crime and things taking place. By doing what you did tonight, my community was able to get streetlights installed without us having to pay for them because of the development agreement that we had in place. Had we not come together as a community, initially, the mayor's administration proposed that my subdivision pay the cost to have that installation done, and it was not until we got together, we did a petition, a formal petition, and we also threatened to go to the media, that I learned that the city actually spent the money that was supposed to be used for our street lighting, and then they ended up putting it in at no cost to us, and we just pay the annual tax fee to maintain it. So I applaud you for coming in here tonight and, and for standing up for yourself. I did have several concerns that we did not discuss during the actual meeting portion because the, the item had been tabled, but what I did wrote down, had we had an actual discussion, is the city was, is legally required to notify homeowners, of course, residents within a certain proximity. If that did not occur, it is, the law was broken. The developer is not required to notify you all the city of Westland was required. So we were able to politely brush over the fact that they would have bulldozed a, a preference had you not come together and come in here tonight. So it needs to be acknowledged that we, as a, a city, might have violated your rights as tax-paying homeowners in our city. That should not be brushed aside if there was no notice. If there was notice, the city should have to provide you all with proof of when was that notice sent, who received it. There's a, a good portion of the community here stating that they were never notified, and as one of our residents stated tonight, this is not the first time that that has occurred. So again, the squeaky wheel gets the oil. So thank you for coming in here, because we, as city council, had no idea either, and we were slated to possibly have just went ahead and approved it tonight had you not said anything. And I also would like to, the city, whenever the meeting occurs, if a meeting occurs, one gentleman mentioned a, a concern regarding sewer lines, a maximum amount of sewer lines, some sort of possible agreement, I'm not sure. The city should have to respond to that and, and, and make sure that when you do get your responses, that hopefully you get them in writing, because in many instances, if it's not in writing, it never happened. It, it becomes a case of hearsay. So thank you for bringing that to our attention. I also would like to congratulate everyone who ran for office here in the city of Westland, as several people said tonight, it is not an easy process. So I'd like to congratulate everyone who ran and everyone who won. I will, I have two more meetings after tonight, and my term will end, and I am so grateful to be walking away with my head held high. I've served for four years. I'm very proud of the way that I've served as a city councilwoman. I have never voted against the interest of Westland residents. I do not sugarcoat or side with my colleagues if I believe that the community or residents are being disadvantaged. I did exactly what I've said I was going to do in four years. I have fought for our community and our residents, and I'm very, very thankful for that. And I am, I've already began the process of going full-fledged into running my construction company, and I'm just so grateful. I'm so grateful to be returning to my sweet spot, which is business. But most of the community has my cell phone number, so if anybody ever needs my assistance, I still plan on helping our community, it'll just be in a different capacity at this moment. But everything happens for a reason, and I am just so excited and so grateful to, to have served and also to be moving onwards and upwards. So thank you for allowing me to serve you. Lastly, I wanted to touch on the discussion by one of our residents tonight, Mr. Richard Graham. It doesn't matter who's friends with whom. Some of these people come in here saying that, oh, well, you know, I, that's my friend, and I don't, it doesn't matter what you think about what your friend is capable of doing, what matters is whether the law was broken. At this point, what has been alleged is just that, an allegation, there was a police report filed. I find it very disappointing that Arthur Warren came to the podium tonight and provided that woman's name to the public. So depending on who supports him, she may find herself in a position of being harassed or ostracized because you have now exposed her when even the police department redacted her personal information. So hopefully you have not put her in a position to be harassed in some sort by your supporters or supporters of the mayor, since this incident allegedly took place at one of his fundraisers. Speaking specifically to what occurred with Arthur, allegedly occurred with Arthur Warren, if any of you have been following Westland politics or not, Arthur Warren, there has been multiple people who have come to city, the city and city officials, and filed complaints about actions or interactions with Arthur Warren. Arthur Warren is a city of Westland mayoral-appointed commissioner. So he serves, he has served on several boards, on the, at the pleasure of Mayor Wild, and he is currently serving. Here's what the city refuses to even consider as a appointed commissioner. His actions place us in a position of liability, because you represent our city as a appointed city commissioner. So with all, now, and, and we now have a police report. There has been multiple meetings where this has all been placed on the record, so if anyone should decide to sue Arthur Warren, who is the little fish, the big fish is the city of Westland, that's where the money is at. And your actions, or alleged actions, continue to place us in a position to where if something else happens again in the future, this police report can be pulled, these meetings can be pulled, these articles that have been written can all be pulled and used very excellently to build a case against the city of Westland for allowing you to put us in a position of liability. It is very similar to if, a situation, if an employee brings a sexual harassment complaint to an employer, and they refuse to investigate it or do anything about it, and it turns out to be true, who's, who's, who's responsible? And this, you, for you to stand at that podium, you, you need to control this room. You need to control this room.
Are you going to give me the opportunity to do it?
I'm waiting, I'm waiting. I'm waiting, I'm waiting.
Hold on, you're out of order.
Yeah, please address your friend. Please address your friend.
Is there a motion?
Thank you, thank you.
Out of order, thank you.
We have, we are sitting in a position of liability yet again, because the mayor has allowed this man to act in a way, allegedly, that is potentially criminal. And this is, he is not the, this is not the first time. And for you, sir, to go to the podium and use Emmett Till's name, and you talking about the, 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 oh, God, I was so offended that you, the man who sat in the CBDG meeting, which is the Community Block Development Meeting, when, as you, when Mayor Wild pointed you to head that commission, and you put a motion on the floor to remove the black portion of Westland, which is the southeast, southeast side of Westland, you put a motion on the floor to remove the black side of Westland, or the majority African-American side, from even qualifying to receive any of those funds. And I recorded the audio from that meeting, and in that meeting, I threatened to call HUD if they approved it. Joanne was there, Mark Neal was there, you put the motion on the floor, Hank Johnson was there, and so I say that to say, as a black person, I am ashamed, because people will look at you as being an older black man and assume that anytime you say anything that has to do with race, it has to be true. You have tried to disenfranchise the black community as a black man.
That's a personal attack.
As a black man.
That's a personal attack.
And what is insulting is that you would sit here, and I don't, I don't, you would sit here, and you would use the race card when you accuse that family of being racist. And then you turn around.
We're at recess.
I, I don't care what recess you call. Don't use Emmett Till's name and the Tulsa, what happened to black people to try and downplay what you allegedly have been accused of yet again in our city.
Can we do a roll call vote, please? Mrs. Clerk?
No, he's not here.
Excuse me. Miss Clerk, can we have a roll call, please?
You all try to do, that's what's wrong with you, and I cannot wait until
Roll call vote, please.
The community finds out what's really going on with these tax dollars.
Roll call vote, please. Counsel McGaughn, for recess.
Councilwoman Green.
Is the, are we still in an actual meeting?
Yes.
We called for a vote, so we're doing a vote.
Are they still recording it as a meeting?
Excuse me, Craig, through the chair to Craig Welkman.
It's yes or no?
We, they're, they're currently having a meeting, so can you confirm, are we still in an open meeting? Because they're now conducting a roll call.
Point of order, there's gonna call for a vote?
No, there hasn't. We
That's what it has.
So
There was, yes.
No, because of what just occurred here.
Roll call vote is on you, Councilwoman Green.
Craig Welkman, can you please confirm that this is being recorded?
Councilwoman Green, the roll call vote is on you.
We're still recording at this portion? I just wanna make sure that we're not making up our rules here.
Well, my honor is abstaining.
Now we, now we, again, don't get to address the residents because of
Because you all, one of you have a god complex, and you think you're going to just get out of rubber rules of order.
Just call a roll call.
Well, thank you. It's very irresponsible for you to walk out and have a tantrum.
Councilwoman Green.
Roll call.
It's very irresponsible for you to have walked out and had a tantrum.
I need you to, I need you to vote, Councilwoman.
You, it's very irresponsible.
If you're not gonna vote, then please call a text.
I don't, I didn't hear my name called.
Councilman Hersberg.
She said it three times.
I didn't hear, excuse me. I, I'm waiting for you to call my name.
Councilwoman Green.
What, what are we voting on?
Recession.
Recession.
For how long?
Five-minute recess.
Yes.
Council, Councilman Protem Londo.
Yes.
Councilman McDermott. Councilwoman Rakowski. Counsel President Hart.
Yes.
We're at recess.
We're now returned from recess. We have quorum. Return to counsel comments from Counsel McGreen.
Thank you. In closing, I would like to just finish my comments before we went to recess, which were that I'm very disappointed that Arthur Warren came to the podium tonight and referenced multiple horrific instances in our nation's history when real racism and terrorist actions took place. And for you to reference them, because you have yet again been accused of despicable actions in our city that seem to go unaddressed, it is very disappointing.
A personal attack, too, Councilwoman.
Is, do you think that him grabbing a woman's thigh in a police report is not despicable?
Oh, look, there's no, I'm not here to debate this. I'm saying calling him despicable and everything, that's a personal attack.
No, I didn't call him despicable. I said he's been accused of despicable acts. That is not a personal attack. That is a fact.
It's a personal attack.
If a woman says he grabbed
It's not a fact, it's an allegation.
No, I said he's been accused of a despicable attack. You cannot control my freedom of speech. I didn't say he was
I don't pretend to try to.
Thank you, thank you. And I would also add that it is very unfortunate, and I do believe that an investigation can be done. City Council has the authority, as four members, we only require that, it only takes four of us to do an investigation, and right now, if anyone, as I stated before, were to bring a lawsuit against the city of Westland for failing to act, you know, it is, it is a decision that will be made by this administration and these council members, many of whom Arthur Warren has contributed to their campaigns for reelection, which is public information. And so, again, I'm very disappointed that the community now knows who this woman is. It's hard enough coming forward when you believe that you have been attacked in some manner as a woman, but to now have her identity publicly exposed is extremely unfortunate. And I would implore the city of Westland to investigate, because a open police report that every member of city council, the mayor's administration, and the Westland Police Department is now aware of, for us to do nothing, because many of you are friends with this gentleman, is a, a disservice to our community. And I'll end on that. Thank you.
Councilman Godbout.
Thanks. It's unfortunate that, and I did get a chance during the recess to talk to some of the residents that were here on the Bellevue Street Lot Split. It's unfortunate we didn't get a chance, since most people have left, and I had some questions for Mo. But again, due to the fact that things tend to get out of hand at these meetings, it's, it's unfortunate that the residents' concerns can't get addressed in a timely fashion. So with that, I do have some concerns about the notification, and I, I'm not sure whether it's the city's responsibility or the developer's responsibility to provide that notice, but we'll get that, we'll find that information out, as well as, the thing that's probably more concerning is the fact that the lots already been cleared. more concerning is the fact that the lot's already been clear-cut prior to a final approval from council with the resolution passing. So, again, we'll try and get some information to those residents, as well as notify them if and when it ever comes back before council to have that resolution considered. I'd like to thank the voters for, you know, my reelection, as well as congratulate all of the other people that won reelection a couple of weeks ago, as well as congratulate and thank all of the candidates that ran for office. It's a tough, tough job, running for office. You put yourself out there, you put yourself up for a lot of criticism and undue stress during that time. So, again, thank you and congratulations to everyone that put their name in and put forth the effort on the reelection, on the election. I'd also like to congratulate all of the Halloween Decoration Contest winners and all the residents who participated. There were, there were a number of residents that participated, and good luck with next year, when we do this again next year. And I'm sure the, and I know the Halloween, or the Christmas Decoration Contest gets even more competitive year after year. So, I'll be looking forward to driving through the city and seeing all the holiday decorations at Christmas time. And then, finally, you know, I did want to try and address Mr. Allen's questions in regards to Nosferini Strategies, or at least give him a little thumbnail. Nosferini Strategies is a consultant, they have a contract, they're a contractor for the city. And as such, they handle a lot of the grant writing and application, as well as the follow-up, doing the financial audits and submissions for grants that get awarded. And to date, actually, we just got an email from Nosferini Strategies, and I did a quick thumbnail add-up of what's been awarded to date this year so far, and it's about $471,000 that the city's been awarded for various grants that were submitted or had the assistance of Nosferini Strategies with, during the application process. So, that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilwoman Rakowski.
Okay. First, I would like to congratulate all of the successful candidates on their election to office, and also ask that those candidates that did run, that were not successful this time, to stay involved and active in the city. Lots of you are. Ms. Martin is. She does a lot with our Rotary. And it's just, it's, sometimes it's daunting with how many candidates there are, but what it does reflect is that there are so many people that are interested in the success of our city. So, it's nice to have a nice, large candidate pool and really let, you know, the wheels of democracy work that way. I'd like to extend my gratitude to the clerk's office and the election workers that participated in making sure the election went smoothly. It was a very long day for them, and I don't think that they get, quite get the recognition that they need or deserve. I'm wearing a purple ribbon today in recognition of the fight against pancreatic cancer. It seems like every month has a ribbon, and I wish I could wear them all, but this one was extended to us by one of the members in our administration, and so, I'm gonna send a special prayer up to them for their family. Additionally, if you are looking to participate in, against the fight of, excuse me, against cancer, fight against cancer, you will, the event will have passed by the time you see this, but the Pizza Palooza event on Tuesday helps support our local Relay for Life walkers. So, that'll be a fun event. I'm looking forward to honoring our veterans this Saturday. The Eighth Annual Veterans Holiday Meal Program is from 10:00 to 2:00. And it's not just for our veterans, it's also for surviving spouses and the family of those that are deployed. So, it's just a really wonderful program, and, you know, that's just a way for us all to extend our gratitude. I'd like to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, and remind you that our Stuffa Swat Truck is back this year with a new location. It's gonna be in front of Myers on the Friday following Thanksgiving. So, if you're braving the crowds, and you feel so moved to support the Goodfellows, whose mission is that there's no child without a Christmas, that would be an excellent opportunity. And I have word that Santa is going to make an appearance at the Swat Truck, Phil Swat Truck event. I'd like to congratulate the Halloween Decor winners. There were some really excellent displays, and I'm really looking forward to seeing what they do for the Christmas and associated holidays. It's always neat to hit Heinz Park and then do our local circuit of all the wonderfully decorated homes. So, with that, happy Thanksgivings, and we'll see you in a couple of weeks.
Thank you. Councilwoman McDermott.
Well, good evening, everybody. Couple of things. Thank you to the residents from Gray Street and Belleville who came here and brought this to council's attention. Pretty much all my colleagues have mentioned, we want some more answers on this. You know, we want answers on the specific lot split, the number of homes being there. Why wasn't a notification given to, seemingly, everybody that came up here said there was no notification given. Why was that the case? And also, why were the trees clear-cut before any notification was given to the people over in that neighborhood? So, certainly, we have this tabled, but we want to make sure to hold the feet to the fire, to make sure this meeting happens, so that people can get the answers that they need. And they're clearly came here en masse from Grace and Belleville Streets to get, and obviously, we couldn't give them tonight, but hopefully, we get a meeting with the developer in hand so they can get some, some clear answers. Look, in regards to, you know, us as elected officials, and anybody that's on a Board of Commission, we are gonna be held to a higher standard, but I'm not gonna go after anybody's integrity, and I'm not gonna go picking sides on one side or the other. This is not a matter that we, as council people, play arbiter in, and so, everybody deserves due process, and everybody deserves the opportunity, whether it's an allegation or the chance to clear their name, they deserve that opportunity. And so, it would be unfair for us, as council people, to pick anybody's side, and if this becomes a legal matter and a legal proceeding, that's how it is going to play out, and it would be wholly unfair for any of us on council to go after someone's integrity or to go after someone who's made an allegation. So, I think the best thing for any of us to do is to let this matter play out in the way in which it will ultimately play out. But I'm not gonna go sit up here and pick a side or point blame at anybody because that is not our responsibility as council people, and everybody deserves a fair process. Everybody. Whether you are, if you made an allegation or if you've had it made against you, I certainly wouldn't want my integrity besmirched, and I certainly, if I, if something happened to me, I would want people to listen to me. So, as a council person, it is not my job to pick a side and to go all in one way or the other. There's a process that's gonna play out. I had some stuff to talk about in regards to the bipartisan infrastructure bill, but I think I'll save that for another day. I want to congratulate all of my colleagues who ran for election and were successful, so, Councilwoman Gabbout, Council President Hart, Councilwoman Hersberg, and also Mayor Wild. But also, thank you to everybody who, you know, put their hat in the ring and decided to run for city council. That includes Mike Delf, John Haddad, Josh Powell, Sarah Austin, Antoinette Martin, who's here with us as well, Candy Holton, and David Cox, and then also to Dan Byer, Edward Pruitt, and Councilwoman Green for running for mayor as well. And then, boy, I had a lot to talk about, but I just don't find that any of this is really appropriate. Yeah, you know, I had some stuff I wanted to talk about in regards to where we're going in the future at the council, lots of meetings I would like to have regarding the ARP funding, responsible contracting ordinance, citizen oversight board, ethics ordinance, but it just doesn't seem like the appropriate time to bring that up. So, with that, you know, I hope to see many of you on Saturday, helping out, passing out Thanksgiving meals to the veterans. Hope to see you tomorrow at Pizza Palooza, and hope you all have a wonderful and happy Thanksgiving. And with that, I bid you good evening.
Thank you, Councilman. First, I'd like to thank Councilwoman Gabbout for leading us from the Pledge of Allegiance, and also to wish you an early anniversary of your 21st birthday this week, which is happening soon, so happy, happy birthday coming up. Secondly, yes, the veterans' meal. So, if you guys do know anybody, I've been doing it as long as I can remember, too. It's actually a really big deal for us. And a lot of people have put in an awful lot of hard work to make sure this is gonna happen. Councilwoman Rakowski is actually the unsung hero behind the scenes, is taking care of most of this thing. So, we have heard to thank for all of the stuff that we've done. But we're gonna be there. If you know any veterans that need, that are not on the list yet, please get them on the list, so they can come out and just get a veterans' meal for us, from us. Let's see. Thank you, Shannon, for coming out, and Deputy Clerk in today. It's always interesting. So, I thank you, and thank you for all the work that you did and all the effort that you and your team, as well as Clerk LeBlanc, put in over the election. It was, it was tough, and you got those results back pretty quick. As everybody else said, you know, thank you to everybody else who supported us, but mostly, thank you to everybody who did run. It is not easy, like my colleagues have said before, putting yourself out there, it's not easy. It's not fun. Begging for money, spending money, have people beat you up because you spent the money in the wrong spot, you know? So, it's, it's always fun. So, it's really tough, but we made it through it, and thank you to everybody who did it. Please stay active in your own way, and I'm sure most of you will. With regards to everything that's happened earlier, Councilwoman Rakowski's comments last meeting summarized them pretty well, and I agree with her. And then, the response, secondly, from Councilman McDermott are spot-on as well. So, there's no need for me to go ahead and repeat all that when I think they've addressed it perfectly. So, there's a right time and place for it. I don't think this is it, but I believe that everybody held up here at any board is held to a higher standard, and I've always felt that, and I've said that before. I said it three and a half years ago during another situation, and I'll, I agree with that now. With that, I want everybody to enjoy Thanksgiving. Thanksgiving is my personal favorite holiday, other than I get to sit and eat turkey and relax and watch football. But really, the day is meant to be thankful. So, I would encourage you all to be thankful for your families, be thankful for what you have, and spend time with family, and just enjoy the day. And that is why it's my favorite holiday. And I don't owe anybody else, other than any gifts or anything, other than I just gotta cook turkey. So, I'm good with that. So, with that, is there a motion to adjourn? Thank you. Good evening. We adjourn.